All right, y'all, this is Neil Sa. Okay, good evening, and welcome to the Shastberry School Board meeting. We have just come out of executive session, so I'm gonna need a, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the special ed position here at the Shastberry School. And I need a second on that?
A second.
Jeff Lee seconded it. All in favor of that motion?
Is this for a para?
Is this for the para?
For the para and is there two positions or just one?
Just one.
Just the para, okay. That's for the para position. Yep. Okay. All in favor of that motion? Okay. Any extensions? Any no's? One no. Okay.
Question?
Yes.
Can you clarify what you just did? You just voted to create a new para position?
A para position for, yes. We, we, okay. Sorry, Tim, I shouldn't have said that. I didn't. Okay. Thank you. All right. Mary's here. Okay, and we will begin with citizens' comments. Is there any citizen comments? Yes?
We have 50 minutes left.
Okay, sure.
Thank you.
Good evening. I am Billy Odenhour. My two youngest daughters are students here at Shastberry Elementary. You'll notice I said students and not salespeople, but I will address that in a few minutes. Before, before I get on to my main thing that I want to say here, I do have a, an important piece of positive feedback to give. I want to say, Ms. McGuire Jones, the fourth grade teacher in this school, is absolutely awesome. You guys did a phenomenal job bringing her into this building. Jeff, you know, my daughter has had some health issues for the last couple of years that specialists at Dartmouth had attributed to stress and through discussions with her had kind of linked back to some stuff at school. Ms. McGuire Jones reached out to me at the beginning of the year to kind of find out what was going on, met with me. She's got an awesome environment in her class. None of those health issues have resurfaced yet this year. Knock on wood, I don't want to stand here and say everything is good and then, you know, go home and hear my stomach hurts, but really, an awesome person, awesome, awesome environment in her class. I would encourage anyone who has the opportunity to, you know, try to get a glimpse of what's going on in there and the connections she's creating with students and see what you can extract from there and spread throughout the SBS unit because it's great. So, you know, I wish that was my only reason for being here today, but I do have something else that I wanted to bring up. And, you know, I will say probably there are a few parents that give Jeff more flack than me. Jeff, you may be able to, to validate that. But I want to say that in one of our last communications, I asked you to ask the board for some help on something. And I feel that really if I want the board to help on something, it's on me to also make that known so that they don't think that you're just an administrator in a tough position, coming back to them saying, "This isn't what the people want. This is what they're telling us." I feel like we are losing our way a little bit, and I'm assuming that it's direction coming from the board, to be quite honest with you. Maybe I'm wrong, but I feel like we're losing our way a little bit with what some of our priorities in the school are. And I think that where I see my priorities for my children being education and safety, I feel like we're starting to let fiscal responsibility, revenue generation, expenses be things that are really driving some of our decisions here. So there are a few things that I, I could sit here with a list of things I want to talk about. I don't want to do that. I don't want to waste everybody's time. I'll give you the, the two most recent prominent ones that stand out to me and as examples. And if anybody feels like they want to have further discussions, you're welcome to reach out to me. Jeff's got my contact info. You can share it with anyone who wants to.
Thanks.
Okay. So the first one I will talk about is revenue generation. We, my kids came home from All Join In, which is a, an assembly that they have here at school recently, and told me about what they had done at All Join In. And at this point, they told me about what we affectionately refer to in my home as the Lead Generation Project. They were given information for a fundraiser that required them to sell nothing but just provide the names, addresses, and phone numbers of friends and family members that an outside company could contact to raise money for school activities. This was presented by the principal at All Join In, so it obviously had, you know, an impact on the kids to hear this coming from the executive leader of the school. It was then reinforced in their classrooms where in one classroom, the kids were offered candy as an incentive beyond the incentives of the fundraiser if they performed well in generating leads for this project. Now, I know that Jeff put a policy in about rewarding the kids with candy last year, and I praise you for that. So for candy to now come out as a reward for the Lead Generation Project tells me that there's a very strong message about the importance of this. What, what really concerns me about this project, in addition to the fact that I feel like we are exploiting our kids and asking them to provide this information, is that, one, there's not even a purpose for this money at this point. We know we want to use it for something positive for the school, but we don't even really know what. And, two, there are some very bad ethical lessons that the kids are learning in this. The elementary school kids were exchanging contact information with each other so that they could write down just each other's info on these lead generation sheets and turn it in. This is the kind of thing that in the world of business and sales gets you fired. And our kids are learning it here in fourth and fifth grade, sixth grade, you know, even younger. So I have some real, real concerns about that. I mean, clearly, clearly a project like that doesn't have education on the forefront. And, you know, to me, to hear that a leader is endorsing this in front of all the students makes me feel like there must be some serious financial pressure coming down from higher levels that is, is making that, you know, necessary. So the other one I want to talk about is cutting expenses. We have, we've been moving towards trying to do our field trips in a more fiscally responsible manner recently. And I've had kids in this school for about six years now, and when my kids were first in the school, almost all of our field trips were transported, the kids were transported by bus. And we're moving a lot towards parental transportation. And I, I can certainly see the fiscal responsibility in having some parents drive some minivans and stuff like that as opposed to paying for buses. But I have some real concerns about the safety as far as how we're, how we're dealing with this. There is a background check that's required. I'm very well aware of that. But when we compare that to what we get with a, with a bus company, it's not the same thing. Do four drivers must maintain a CDL, which has physical requirements that essentially ensure things that like a driver's not hypoglycemic and going to pass out due to something that we could anticipate in the car? They have to maintain their vehicles. Their vehicles go in for inspection three to four times a year. So the, one of the questions that I will pose to our leaders here, and this could be rhetorical, if you have an answer, you're welcome to give it. If you don't, you can sit on it, is who's inspecting the vehicles of the parents that are going to be doing all the driving? Who are we certified? What mechanic are they going to? Who do we have on staff that's doing it? You know, consider that. Drug testing. Do four drivers are subject to random drug and alcohol screening. Are we going to be drug and alcohol screening parents here in the building? Now, I know that the instinctive reaction is if I see someone who looks drunk or high, I'm gonna, you know, I'm gonna stop them. But then my question is, who's training people in the school to really identify that? Because it's a very difficult thing to identify. And if you accuse somebody of being intoxicated and they're not, you've got a whole nother problem on your hands. So, do four drivers are trained in CPR? They get safety training annually, eight hours of safety training every year? Are we going to be providing safety training annually to the parents that are signing up to do this? Are we going to be getting them certified in CPR so that if a, a kid comes in contact with peanut butter that they didn't expect to be in the backseat and goes, and goes into an allergic reaction, that that parent is prepared to deal with that situation? These are all questions that I have when I see this. Okay? Now, the reality is, I feel pretty confident that there are going to be a lot of times where if I say my kid can drive with a, with a parent to a field trip, that it'll probably be someone I know or I'm friends with, and I'll be okay with that. But I, as a parent, I don't feel comfortable giving a blanket yes on that type of thing because the fact of the matter is, I don't have control over it all the time. And no parent should be put in a situation where they feel like for the social benefit of their child, they have to make a commitment like that. They may not be comfortable with it. You know, and I would, I would encourage you to all consider, as I go back to my point about the random drug testing, because I think that's a really important thing, is that if we choose fiscal responsibility over safety in this case, and we have somebody who's high or drunk crash a car with five kids in it, everyone who stood up for that policy owns that. So, like I said, as I started, to me, my priorities in school are education and safety. The two examples that I gave you here aren't the only examples that I have. They're just the most recent, and I don't feel that either one of them really stands behind those values. So I just ask you to consider these things, and as we go into budgeting season, provide this man with the resources he needs to put education and safety first. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, next we will jump right into the superintendent's report.
Okay. I am glad to hear you say that education comes first, and I would be, I'm just pleased to be able to say that, that is one of our focuses this year is, is truly on looking at first best instruction. And one of our focus areas has been multi-tiered systems of support. So we're looking at the many ways that we can best facilitate that in helping teachers to understand what that means in their classroom and how to really look at our standards that we have now, our common core standards, and understand really what they mean and how do they look in practice. So our professional day on Monday, the 19th, there's no school on Monday. It is a day for our staff members to learn more about our standards. One of the focus areas is on English language arts, on reading and writing skills, and what those actually look like at the different grade levels, and how to help implement those using the technology resources that we have, which are really growing in our district and helping to facilitate learning. So we have many different grade level groups planned for Monday so that every group can really be looking at their standards, what are the benchmark, benchmarks for performance in each area, how does that, how is that reported out to parents? What, how do they write that onto their report cards? And really focusing on the supports that they have that can help them best facilitate education each and every classroom. So that is for Monday. It's going to be our very busy schedule for our staff members, and I would like to thank Laura Boudreau, our Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, for putting that day together. There are also events for all special providers, as nurses, phys ed teachers, and everyone else that we have in our schools. So it's a very organized event, and I just thought I'd give you an update on that.
Neil Sa?
Mm-hmm.
All right, thanks. Okay, personnel. Is that Jeff? Okay. I don't know if that's your or. Okay. We'll go to the action items next. And we got the, we got the treasures report, but I don't have it and didn't get it. I don't think, did anybody else have the?
I think it says that we don't have it yet.
Okay. Okay, next one. We'll do that next one. Next one is the award defense bid. Rick, do you want to?
Yeah, you, um, pick me up, okay?
I'll sit here.
Can you give me some air?
Rick, constantly. Are you good Fran with me?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. You're good.
Thanks, Tony. So in your packet, you should have received the summary of the, of the bids. We went out for bids. Trying to do it by memory here as I look for the report. Three firms were interested in it, and two ultimately bid. Becker Landscaping here in Shastberry, Springfield Fence over in Springfield, Vermont. We asked for two different types of, actually, asked for a multitude of issues. We've got three different sections of fence, and we looked at both galvanized and black coated fencing. And you can see that the bids were very close. Depending on what the board chooses, they want to do, all three sections, two sections, one section. And depending on how you add those up, depends on who the low bidder is, but they're close, you know, in both directions. I would recommend you go with the black coated fence. We've had great luck with that around the district. It is much more friendlier on the eyes than the galvanized. It looks awful institutional, and in some cases, if you go with that 14-foot-high fence, in my opinion, would look like a prison. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. It's a board's pleasure where they want to go.
Is the, the black coated fence, that's what they're basically using everywhere anyway. It's more durable, I know, as far as?
It's, it's, in my mind, you, you lose it in the eyes. You don't see it that much. It's a little safer as far as the kids are concerned. You don't have any of the sharp stuff that you're gonna scrape, you know, if kids are scraping their hands or something on it. It's, it's just more aesthetically pleasing as far as I'm concerned.
Can, Rick, can you remind people who may not remember or may not know what, where the fence is going to be located, which sides?
Yeah, it's out at the new parking area. Section one goes along your neighbor to the east-west. We're replacing that section of fence. Section two is, on the other side, separates a walkway from the parking lot and has a 90-degree turn and separates a basketball court from the parking lot. Section three puts up a 14-foot section on top of that four-foot section to prevent balls from going into the parking lot from the basketball court.
Otherwise, section one and two are four feet high?
Four. Uh, section one is five feet.
I was gonna say, it'd be a little bit higher.
I believe, but section two is four or five.
Thank you.
Are these questions?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, Tim.
Okay fences, or can you?
Are they what fences?
Okay, do you see if they're doing?
Yeah, it's just like a chain, it's a, it's a chain link fence. One, you know, one price is galvanized. The other one is black coated. It's got a rubber coating on it, but it's still the chain, chain link design.
On the part that's replacing the neighbor's fence, what's different between the new fence and the old fence? Replacing a fence this day?
You're replacing a galvanized chain link fence with a black coated chain link. Well, my recommendation would be black coated, but.
If, if they don't go with the black coated, would it be the same fence?
Same galvanized.
So you wouldn't, you wouldn't replace it?
Yeah, they would replace it because it needs to be repaired and replaced because there's, the top of it has got some sharp edges on it that are dangerous.
So it's a, in full maintenance?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the same original fence.
Yeah. And that was part of the permit, two negotiations with the neighbor about what was going on. She wanted it replaced.
Do, Rick, do you have any opinion about using both contractors and, you know, realizing the least cost by awarding part of it to one and part to the other?
Oh, I would definitely not use both. I would, you, you award to either one or the other. I think they're close enough that I'd recommend you award to your local contractor.
I'm only asking because you or somebody here pointed out that if you just looked at sections one and two, it would be cheaper to go with one company.
He's pointing it out because it was factual.
Okay, you're not, we shouldn't infer anything from that.
Can you give the audience the numbers on the, the different options since we don't have that here?
Sure.
Go ahead, Rick.
Um, so the black coated, all three sections with Becker Landscaping is $8,000, $8,713. Springfield Fence is $10,000. Galvanized Becker is $6,000, $982, and Springfield is $8,000, $525. Excuse me, but if you only do sections one and two, you don't put up the, basically the backstop for the basketball. Springfield is the lower bidder by about 200 bucks for the black coated and basically roughly the same price for the galvanized.
So that was all three sections were?
All three sections, all three sections black would be $8,713 for Becker or $10,000 even for Springfield.
Do we have any other projects pending that might dip into the capital improvements account? We're going to be asked to take some money from that.
Yeah, the pump we were warned of.
What's that?
There was a pump we were warned of.
Oh, yeah, what was the pump? The septic pump, yeah.
That's not on our agenda or on our plan at this time.
Right, right. It was just something that's coming. Myself, I'm looking at this. I, I don't mind doing one and two. I got a problem with doing three. The back, what's that fence? 14-foot high, whatever it is?
Well, it'd be 10-foot on top of four, so it'd be 14-foot high, yeah.
Yeah. I, I don't know. I, myself, I think we can alleviate that. I don't think we need that. We definitely need the, the fence for the students on the walkway going toward the school. Definitely got to have that. And we got to do the one for the, the neighbor. But I, I, if it's, if it's just the bas, worried about the basketball going into the parking lot with cars there. I've done a lot of work with schools as far as people putting in claims of dents in the car or something like that. You have to go through your own insurance company. You don't go after the school. It's just, I've done it for years, and that's the way it works. But I don't think, it's not going to be a heck of a lot of cars parked there.
I think the other concern, Fran, is keeping the balls out of there so the kids aren't going in the parking lot.
Right, I get it. I do get that.
Not just, not just damaging the car. Because you're right, there's not a lot of cars there during recess time.
And, I, well, I'll leave it to the board, see what they think. Holly?
There's less than $1,000 left in what we had planned for this project.
In the, in the reserve fund, correct.
Yeah, she's talking about $16,000 or something that we, yeah.
In, back in June, we voted that 16.5 would be the max to this pro, project, correct? Does anybody else remember that?
That's how much, that's how much you allocated from the reserve fund, right?
Right, that's how much.
No, that's how much we said that it would not exceed that, is my recollection.
I think you're in the ballpark.
So how did we get here? We have $8,000 more that we have to pay with less than $1,000 to finish the project.
So if we did one and two, sections one and two, so you're looking at $5,500?
And is this, would this be the done, done? This would be done?
On, on the fence part, yeah. And then after, eventually, what we want to do is try to blacktop the whole yard. That would maybe next year. Depends on, you know, what we're looking at. I know you, Jeff said that the pump, the septic pump, that we don't, that's not a issue right now?
It's not, it's just a, yeah, he just gave us a, something to keep in mind. The blacktop is, is due to be done next summer from the reserve fund.
Right.
This money for the fence was not coming out of the reserve fund. It was coming out of the general.
And we still got to look at, we, I do want to look at that security thing, too. Dave, Jeff, I'm sorry, Tim.
Opinions of the parents and the citizens. This is not a huge, huge amount of money. The difference between what you have to do, which is to fence off the sidewalk, and doing the whole thing the right way is a few thousand dollars. I mean, keep the balls out of the parking lot, keep the kids from going in the parking lot, and make it look nice. We're going to be looking at this for 30, 50 years. It's not a lot of money.
Billy?
I, I share most of Tim's sentence, but what I was going to say is, I'm sure the board at some point is going to be going back and forth on this stage three piece. So I would encourage you to, as you go back and forth on that, not rule out intermediates. You know, may, maybe there could be a possibility of, you know, if the fence is pushed back right to the parking lot and you do six feet instead of four, that you play the angle of most of the basketball. You know, just, just consider alternatives other than, if you're not okay with 14, don't consider four the only option. That's my recommendation.
I mean, you know, my concern is, you know, as a boy, if I see a four or six-foot fence, I'm climbing it. You know, I'm jumping, I'm going from the parking lot over the fence.
That's, yeah, there we go.
You know, that's where I'm going as a six-year-old boy or sixth grader. And so I mean, how long that last fence lasts? Well, if it's 14 feet, I'm not going to scale. You know, I'd, I'd take the long way or, you know, because that pathway, they're going to go down a path where there's nothing to jump there. You know, if you're going from the parking lot, drop a bike in the parking lot, jump the fence. You know, I mean, that's what I'm, I'd be doing.
There's, they're going to have plenty of opportunities to continue to jump that four-foot fence. The 14-foot section is literally only at the end of the basketball court. So there's going to be a lot of.
But then I can jump into a sidewalk, into a parking lot.
Yeah, and, and, you know, to Billy's point, you know, I don't know exactly, but your variation of depth is probably three or four feet at most. You know, there's not much.
I had no idea what the placement was.
There's not much there you can do, and.
Are there, are there kids out there playing basketball now? Are their balls rolling into the parking lot?
Yes, yes.
Rolling in, so a four-foot fence might prevent that, but.
It would prevent the rolling, yeah, yeah.
But, anyway.
And Fran, it makes a good point. There's not a lot of cars there during that time. Usually it's my truck and one other subcar maybe, but after school, it could be an issue. And like I said, I think of it more of, I don't want my students necessarily going in the parking lot anyway to chase the ball whether there's cars there or not.
Now, it's got, have the length and netting. You're talking about putting netting? It's what it says here.
That's my, that's my mistake, Fran. I think originally I thought there was going to be netting in the fences, yeah.
Okay, because I know the netting alone can be $4,000.
That's what I think with the fencing.
Netting's not, it's, I know it doesn't sound right, but that, netting's not cheap.
No, I talked to Jim Marsden on that for over at the high school.
Then how you have to secure that is not inexpensive as it is either.
Well, what's the board think? Do you want to go the 14-high fence?
My feeling is 14-high fence. I mean, just, you know, it kind of makes sense. You know, I mean, whether you, it doesn't matter if it's your car, the ball hits your car. If you're walking out with a kid and get whacked in the head by a basketball, you know, that could injure somebody, which is not covered in your insurance for your vehicle. Because people are going to park there, and kids like to play old court basketball and like to huck the ball nice and hard. And, you know, if you have a parent standing or looking the wrong way, it could injure somebody that way. So, you know, you have to think of that as well. It's not just cars. There's people out there.
Dave?
Yeah, I guess to Holly's point, I have to say, I, I feel, and, and I may have either been not paying attention or not at a meeting, but I felt with this parking lot project for some time that I didn't really know what was happening. And I, not blaming anybody except possibly myself. But if there was a question about what does a cost, and we, you know, earlier were presented with, here's what a parking lot might cost a district, and then later on, we're coming back and say, oh, well, we need a fence. And that's actually going to be, you know, another $8,000. And we only need a fence because we've got the parking lot there.
Right.
So, I mean, I, I don't know, Holly, I don't mean to be putting words in your mouth, but that's, you're expressing, or if I'm expressing sentiments that aren't really yours, but.
No, you're, you're good. Fine.
I guess at this point, I'm inclined to say, yeah, let's spend the $2,700 to keep dollars to keep the ball out of the parking lot. So I'll, I'll go along with it.
Okay. And Jeff, you're all right with it?
I'm all right with it.
Forty-one hundred on that one. And the forty-one hundred is the black coated, correct?
Look, you probably shouldn't look at this. This was my numbers when I first bought the big T, my first, my quote to you guys.
Where'd you get forty-one hundred?
So, all right, so twenty-seven hundred.
He's looking from my sheet.
It's twenty-seven forty-four.
These were my quotes, these are Rick's quotes.
Okay, I was gonna say here, I, watch the heck I'm looking at.
You're talking eighty-seven thirteen?
Right.
To do the full project.
Blacktop also?
No, that's separate, that's the twenty-five hundred down below, that was...
That wasn't planned to do this year either, we just had to do that though.
Yeah.
Just decided.
You have to do that before you put the fence in.
It's recommended by both, um, Land O'Bedore and the fence companies to get that walk, walk strip laid and you'll drive the posts through it. Otherwise you'll have patching jobs that you won't be happy with.
Yeah, it's, I don't wanna do that. Okay, so I'll put it to a vote then.
The motion being what?
The motion being, well, do we go, I'm gonna put the motion that we go with Becker fencing or landscaping, and the black coated, and we do, I'll tell ya, I have my druthers on this, I'd rather not do that, 'cause I know we haven't planned on this, but we'll do all three sections. Do I need a second on that?
A second.
Okay. All in favor of that motion? Abstentions, no's, one no, okay. All right.
Thank you.
What I wanna do in the future is when we get involved in any of these, again, we're gonna know exactly where we are from the beginning so we don't have any surprises. Anyway, okay. Solar consortium proposal.
Um, you all...
You have, yeah.
Have, uh, presentation came in your packet, I assume?
Yep.
Um, I'm hoping, I have a couple lectures if somebody wants. I'm not gonna read this word for word, I'm gonna assume you read through it. I'm going to hit some highlights for the general public so they understand what we're considering, and, um, hopefully if we get to the end, we'll have a conversation about potentially making a motion. Um, so back in, uh, April, May, um, this board agreed to enter into a consortium with other school districts throughout the state, um, and pursuant to some legislation that was passed, uh, we got some Act one fifty-six grant money to, um, pay for a lot, well, pay for all the preliminary work, um, legal work, drafting contracts. We went out, uh, we entered into a consulting contract with Competitive Energy out of Portland, Maine. There's some information on the background of what they do and the number of institutions they deal with, a lot of educational systems in New England that they work with, largely colleges, um, a consortium overview, there's eight supervisory unions in the consortium, of which we are actually the largest. Ironically, most all of them are southern Vermont, Rutland South, there's one up, um, very north in Franklin West, up near the Canadian border. The only criteria for being a member of the consortium is you have to be part of the Green Mountain grid, part of their power grid. We are looking at purchasing roughly nine megawatts, um, to cover all of our needs, roughly sixty-one metered accounts. We use, uh, collective bargaining, uh, the consortium to go out to bid to create a competitive environment. We received eleven responses back. Those were, those responses and discounts on our rates range from fifteen to thirty-five percent discount. We, the consortium is recommending that we contract with two companies, um, one of them being, um, Nexus, Nexamp, I mean. It's a small operation, but they're giving us the largest discount of thirty-five percent. The next company is Sun Edison, who has given us a discount of roughly thirty-two percent. Sun Edison has, um, capability to provide, um, unlimited amount of power, Nexamp is limited to the size of their, their proposal. One of the, some of the questions is, you know, why do we wanna go with a net metering proposal? A, there's no, um, there's no hardware on any of our facilities, you will not see, um, a solar panel on your roof or on your property, um, it'll be built somewhere in the state of Vermont, somewhere in the Green Mountain grid, I have no idea where it is, I'm not sure anybody does yet. There's very minimal risk, the biggest risk you have is if you purchase, uh, if you over purchase of credits, and I'll explain that in a little bit. There's no upfront money, and, um, you're obviously looking at a sizable reduction on your, um, electric bill. There's a little diagram that shows you how the net metering works, basically the developer produces power, sells it to, well, can't sell it, puts it on the Green Mountain grid, by the law, Green Mountain can't pay the developer, so they pay us, um, for the power, and then we pay the developer. And with, uh, a deal that we have with Competitive Energy, we have to pay them a, um, commission on the project. I talked about Nexamp and some of their benefits. Sun Edison, um, they're both willing to give us, um, educational opportunities, um, different things, there's a slide in there for that. They can do customized kiosks, um, online dashboards for, you know, staff if they wanna work with students, solar science events, and, you know, work with some collaborative click curriculum down the road. You see the financial results there on page fifteen, um, for the supervisory union, we're looking at over a hundred and ten thousand dollars per year for twenty years of savings. The next slide shows you specifically Shasbury. Shasbury's looking at roughly seven thou- or nine thousand dollars a year in savings. Those estimates are based on your last three years usage. Only buying eighty percent of the credits. Uh, as I said before, you don't want to, uh, the biggest, the only risk is that you, if you purchase a hundred percent of your credits and technology comes along in the next twenty years, that now all of a sudden you're only buy, you know, you're buying eighty percent of the amps instead of, um, you still have to buy those credits. So, we're proposing that you only buy eighty percent, um, and then you'll get a thirty-two percent discount on the eighty, and the next page shows you that math, I don't really agree with the net savings, I still say you're having a net savings of about thirty percent, but the way they, they calculate it out, if you have thirty-two percent of your eighty percent, then you pay CES their three percent commission, you're at twenty-two percent savings on your entire one hundred percent electric bill, although you're really getting a thirty percent savings on the credits that you're buying, which, um, again, is sizable, is a sizable, um, reduction. We do need, um, permission from the Public Service Board, uh, once everybody has signed on to this, um, they will be applying to the board for approval, it is expected that they will grant it, but it's not guaranteed. It's expected the credits would start to flow, um, in probably June, so it'd be halfway through your FY, um, seventeen budget. So this'll take some pressure off of your, um, of your next year's budget.
Did you say, I'm sorry, did you say June, next June?
Yeah, not next June.
Sorry, that...
Because it'll, it'll be finished, the projects have to be done by December two thousand sixteen, so it'll be on board for, actually be on board for the two thousand eighteen budget, I'm sorry, June of two thousand seventeen, or two thousand eighteen budget. So we have a tight window, you don't have to make a decision tonight, but if you didn't, you would have to have a special meeting that we have to have decisions back to CES by November fifth.
And are we, um, is each district able to say yes or no?
Woodford, if you care, but Woodford and BSD has already said yes.
Yeah, do all eighty percent?
If misery likes company. But, um, if you don't care, ignore what I said.
It's the, your, uh, recommendation that we only purchase eighty percent, credits towards eighty percent of our current bill, just...
That's actually CES's recommendation and I support it.
And, and is it because, um, we, you know, ten years from now, we may not be using as much electricity? Technology may...
That's a risk, I mean, they've, they've come up with new electric, um, I don't know how many times over the last ten years, probably three different conversions over the last ten years that has saved us a ton. You know, the risk is somebody invents cold fusion and you don't use anything.
Right.
Um, I can't, I can't ask you to speak to your...
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, if I'm understanding this correctly, you have to lock in on how many credits you're gonna purchase annually for the next twenty years upfront?
Correct, correct.
So, has anybody run an analysis on the electric usage in the building over the past twenty years to see what that trend would look like?
Past three years, we didn't go back twenty.
Okay, well, the past three years, we'll give you an average of what you looked at recently, but it's not gonna show you what kind of trend it's been, you know, efficiency. So as you mentioned, there've been three major upgrades over the ten years, based upon the knowledge that you're gonna make twenty percent from those three major upgrades, or have you been considering these pieces? Uh, the reason I ask this is that in the short term, this looks great, but I'm also, you know, thinking twenty years down the line, you know, if there are, say, five major technological improvements over the course of those twenty years, are we then paying thirty percent more than, than we should be?
That's a risk, um...
Yeah, I just think some analysis, some more detailed analysis of the past could be a little more insight into what risk you're going to...
The, um, you know, the energy upgrades that we've done, um, has probably been about ten percent, that would be my guess, you know, wouldn't be much more than that. You know, one of the nice things in here, and I probably should've mentioned that, is, you know, you do have the ability to offload. The question, the question was raised, well, you know, we're going through a consolidation, supposedly, maybe, you know, what if a building gets shut down, and we've entered into this twenty-year contract? We can offload and transfer those credits to other places, so, you know, the assumption is you'd be able to do the same if you, um, you know, transfer them over to Cole Hall or to another school or something somewhere, but, um, that is a risk, that's the only, that's the only risk that you think.
No, I understand that clearly, I just figured that if you're looking at a commitment for twenty years in the future, that this local data that goes back more than three years could be helpful in assessing that risk.
Rick, just so I understand this here, the estimated annual available utility spent, that's the five twenty-nine on the whole SVSU, you know, five twenty-nine ninety?
That's the, that's the entire issue.
Yeah, okay. And we get down to the, the N one and the hundred and eighteen seven oh two, that's the amount of money that's gonna be saved out of that five twenty-nine?
Through, across the entire issue.
Okay, now what happens, and I think that's what Mr. Ovindar is saying, with the, this, these people are making money somehow, or...
Who's these, who's these people? There's multiple people involved.
I keep saying these, I shouldn't say these, gets me in trouble, right?
The these.
Tell me which...
Well, whoever the, whether it be Nexus...
The developer?
Yeah, the developer or Sun Edison.
Yeah, the develop, the developers, yeah, they're making their money by the solar credits they're receiving from the federal state.
And Larry had the same question, that does that mean that everybody, every other person in the town would see an increase on their electric bill?
They already have that increase on their electric bill.
They already have it.
This is your opportunity to get that money back to your community.
Get you all eighty, correct, eighty percent, or do we go any percent we want?
Well, you can go thirty if you wanna, take any percentage you wanna.
I would rather make this decision when I have all five board members here, if that's okay, I just, I don't feel...
That would, that'd be a special meeting.
Well, we're gonna have, I, I gotta s...
Because it has to be done by the path.
Okay, uh, we gotta have a budget meeting on the twenty-ninth of this month, so can we do it then?
Yeah.
That's like, 'cause you said you needed it two, two weeks out, so, we can do it then, if that's okay. And then that way there, we've got their input and...
It's up to the board, it's up to them by the minute.
Okay.
I keep hearing the savings and I keep hearing, we have this twenty-year contract and there's something that has to be paid each month for, what is that number? What is the number that we have to pay as our share for...
So you're gonna, if you look on page four, sixteen...
Sixteen.
So, you're no, you're, for the eighty percent of the credits, you look under, if you want...
I, I see what that says, but what is the number?
You, you're, you're gonna pay to the developer in CES twenty-two thousand two hundred twenty-two bucks.
A year?
That's a year, it's an annual number.
So twenty-two thousand, how much?
It's right in the chart, there, twenty-two thousand two twenty-two.
That's just us?
Yeah.
Per year?
And you're getting, so it's gonna be your savings of eight thousand six hundred and forty-two dollars a year.
It's currently paying the thirty thousand now.
You're currently paying thirty-eight thousand five seventy-nine. You're still gonna pay, you're still gonna pay, um, some amount to Green Mountain Power, 'cause you're only buying the eighty percent.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So when, um, solar companies come to the town and offer deals like this, the deal was, uh, give us some land to put a solar array on, like the landfill, and in exchange for that, you'll get discounted electricity for some amount of time. But you said there's no solar arrays going up here.
I'm not saying there's not, they're, they're negotiating those with private people somewhere in this...
So why are we, what are we putting in to get a discount of thirty percent on our electricity?
We are the conduit that they need in order to build this array, because the law says that the Green Mountain Power cannot pay the developer, they have to pay a net metering client. We are the net metering client, so that they can build this thing, so they can get the, um, solar, um, discount, tax credits for, and they'll, they'll sell those, they could either keep them themselves and use them as tax credits, or they could sell those on an open market to somebody else.
Okay, and the, the, the percentages that we're throwing around, the twenty percent, thirty percent in discount in electricity is relative to the base rate for Green Mountain Power for the next twenty years?
Yep, and as that, as Green Mountain Power rates go up, you get thirty percent of that higher rate, so your discount theoretically goes up.
So is it like, uh, Fran's point that we're getting a discount at the expense of other rate packers, there's no other money coming into the system, right?
No, I think you're, that's correct, but there's, you're already paying that now through your, so, your, through your electric bill, there's a solar charge on your electric bill. This is an opportunity to get that money back in the community. This is an opportunity to get that money back in the community.
Yeah, I'm not saying it's a bad thing for Shasbury to do this, but I'm, I guess, philosophically, I'm wondering if it's a good thing for Vermont, if we're just shifting ten percent from Shasbury to Burlington or something like that.
There is, there is a risk, if you're the last person on the grid that's not buying solar, you're going to have a pretty big electric bill. But it's going to take a lot of projects to get to that point.
Rick, is, is lighting the primary electric draw here in our district?
I mean, the computers. Computers are a pretty significant draw. You know, and you're putting more and more computers in the building every day.
Well, I would, I would move the motion tonight, I don't know that there are three votes for it, but should I bother to read it, or there are only two votes?
Well, if you don't have three, if you, if you don't have three votes, I'd rather you not, because then you gotta do a whole nother-
Yeah, yeah.
I'd rather do this at our budget meeting on the, I wanted, I'll set it right now for the twenty-ninth. Can't do it on the twenty-eighth, some people want it twenty-eighth, but we got SVSU on the twenty-eighth, so.
Is that Thursday?
Yeah. Thursday would, twenty-ninth would be Thursday, yes. Yeah, and all we're going to do is budget and now we can do this, if that's the case. So I'd rather do it that way there, and everybody's got, has their input and then it's, it's done. Yea or nay, one or the other. So keep that paper that you have, the move, so, motion. Okay?
So it's Thursday, the twenty-ninth?
Yes.
Six-thirty?
Six-thirty, yeah. Okay. Okay, next would be the tuition agreement discussion. Oh, I had something. Let me do that to Rick. Larry gave me that today when I seen him at the lister. That's how they do it, and I'm wondering why we, ours is, we have ours now at ten-five. That's supposed to be the formula that they use. I'm going to give it to you.
The question being what?
Well, the question, they use the formula, why, our cost per student is like twelve thousand, so why couldn't ours, this is his question, that why couldn't our, we do the same thing as they're doing? And maybe we can't, maybe the numbers don't-
My guess is it's probably exactly the same thing, they just have higher cost per pupil than you do.
Okay, all right. I was asked to give it to you, there it is.
I'd have, I'd have to look at it, but-
Okay.
What are you guys talking about there?
It's a chart, yeah, I should have made copies.
It's just from Dorset School, Proposed Announce Tuition.
Jeff, could you make copies of that for us?
Okay.
Yeah, if you can, yeah, make some copies, that's what they all have in there.
To announce the tuition, there's a state formula.
Okay.
And it's basically, for all practical purposes, it's your cost to educate, less transportation, less sped, less debt service, I think, are the three things.
Okay.
And that's what, you can announce, you can announce anything less than that, you can't announce more than that.
So we actually could be doing the tuition at twelve thousand, correct, or no?
No, because that twelve thousand dollars includes-
Oh, that includes the strength, never mind, okay.
Transportation, includes your debt service.
All right, you're right, okay.
And it includes your sp, your net special education costs.
All right. Go ahead, you're on.
I'm out about what?
The discussion, the tuition agreement discussion, so I just gave you that-
I didn't put that, I didn't put that on there, what am I talking about?
Well, that's good, well, we-
Well, I have a question.
I'll be happy to talk about it, but I don't know what it is.
We agreed last time that our tuition would be ten thousand, five hundred.
Correct.
So that's what it's set for this year, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I guess that's, go ahead, Holly, you can lead into that.
When you guys approved, when you signed the tuition agreements with Shasbury.
Right.
Or North Bennington, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
What is our cost per student at Shasbury? Mine, you just said minus, minus, minus.
Your, your educational spending pre-equalized pupil?
Yes.
Cost per student, yeah.
Yeah.
Twelve something?
Twelve, three ninety, something like that.
Twelve something.
Twelve, totally change.
Twelve thirty-nine?
I can get that, sorry.
Knocked off my head, but it's, you know, those numbers are in there somewhere, it's twelve something, mid twelve.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't have that with me.
Well, that's already set, and I don't know why it's on there, I didn't put it on there, but I thought the superintendent did.
You're, well, Mary Lee may have left it on from last meeting, sometimes it, you know.
Okay.
But you are, if it makes you feel better, or worse, I don't know. You are next to the lowest in ESU.
Yes.
To Woodford, to Woodford.
Yeah.
But don't compare yourself to Woodford, because they're an anomaly, because of all your foresting and all.
Well, yeah.
You guys have, you're very favorable, not only to the ESU, but to the state, you're below the state average. You know, every year, budget time, you see those numbers, you see those comparisons. I'd be happy to, I'll be happy to pull them out for this year for you, Holly, and get them to you. But comparatively, this district has, has done very well, and largely, and I've said this a number of times, and to those of you that have been on the board more than two years, it does sound like I broke the record. It's largely a result of a rising population, because you've been a little bit of an anomaly in the state. Not that you've getting hundreds of kids, but, you know, you're getting a few kids. This year, actually, you're down a couple of kids, I think. You're getting the tuition kids from North Bennington, which is a significant help, and you've had staff turnover, which, two sides to that coin, you know, you're losing some experienced teachers, but you bring in less expensive replacements. And the downside to that is, you won't be seeing that phenomenon anymore. So you will now see the inflationary growth of your younger staff increasing your budgets, as opposed to being offset by retirements. So that's the forty-second, thirty-thousand-foot overview of the success you've had over the last few years. I don't know if that helps or not, but.
Anybody else? Okay, we'll go on to the consent agenda. We have the minutes for September ninth, and we have warrants. Anything on either? I have a couple on the warrants, I have the nature's classroom, it's a warrant two thousand three on page four for seven ninety, what was that?
That was, yeah, that was the busing, that, we sent the money over to Central that we already raised.
Okay.
But didn't pay that busing bill.
Okay, that's what I thought. And on the same warrant, two thousand three, it's the page two, this oil tank cover repair?
Yeah, the oil tank cover that's right out back outside Jay's door-
Oh, okay.
Was deteriorating and needed repair and-
And no, it's been hit or something.
Yeah, no, 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 but-
All right. Anybody else? That's all I had on that.
I just asked that you amend the consent agenda to include-
That's right.
A warrant two thousand four, which I handed out, which is a single check warrant to pay your debt service, they moved, they moved our debt service payment up from December one to November one, I gotta, I gotta get that out the door.
Now, that's ten thousand, so that leaves five thousand on that debt, which would be the bond.
Sure, you have that off the top of your head, the board, that, that means you're the-
I'm pretty sure it's fifteen thousand.
Every year, you ask me that question, you're right, you're right every year, Fred, I just-
We wanted to pay it off, but you can't do that, they make you-
You cannot, you cannot prepay.
So, anyway, so we got five thousand left in debt, so that's-
Although they, they did refinance, you know, you saved a couple of dollars in interest.
Good. Okay.
On the minutes, I'm reminded Jen Arlata used to look these over with an eagle eye and catch every little thing. It's, right at the very top, it says, Board of Director, Special Meeting Minutes, September ninth, and I don't think it was a special meeting, so maybe that was left over from a previous.
Probably, yeah.
I just, I won't take them all out, but on the warrants, we, it's every, every month, Larry's not here, so I'll, he's, the local, locally supplies, I'm just, I'm just curious. Last month was thirty-six hundred dollars to stock a closet, this month in the warrants is a thousand, six hundred and fifty. We have a twenty thousand dollar budget with six thousand, five hundred dollars left from now till June.
Where's the twenty thousand dollars coming from, Holly, what, would you, is that the teacher's line for the supplies?
Supplies elementary.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just, I'm just, every, every month, and I'm not saying-
Historically, seventy-five percent of the supplies and materials are purchased upfront.
Okay, but at the end of last year-
You don't, you don't typically see them, you know, one tenth a month that goes through.
Okay, the end of last, I just remember, maybe we had the discussion at the end of last year, monies needed to be used up for the end of the year, so we had those things. I just, I'm just a little cautious.
There's a set number that teachers can be reimbursed for supplies, correct?
Right.
And so beginning of the year and end of the year, they tend to be more heavy, because they turn in those receipts, because either A, they want the money at the end of the year, or B, they're buying supplies for classroom. Does that sound correct?
So you're saying that, like, from now till?
But once the money's gone, it's gone.
Yeah, the teacher has six hundred dollars in their budget.
They don't get reimbursed.
Okay. Anything else, anybody else? So, Holly?
I am.
Okay, all right. So we have the minutes and we have the warrants, we'll take them both the same.
And you amended it to include the what?
Oh, and, I'm sorry, yeah, we need to make sure we amend it to include the voucher two thousand four, that's an amount ninety-seven, eighty-one, fifty-one.
So we-
Okay, second? One second, and Jeff seconded, all in favor, motion?
Right.
Any abstentions? Any no? Okay, one no, okay.
Not trying to be difficult, but we haven't even had a budget discussion yet.
There's four, there's four signatures I need, please.
You guys can sign that and we'll move on. Okay, the next one will go on to the policy, and we have up, all three policies are for warning, number five thousand four, it's prevention of harassment, aging, and bullying. Holly, do you want to elaborate on that, or?
No, those three are all rec, required policies.
Okay.
And there was a lot of discussion at the meeting about policies and administrative regs and the importance of policies being in place, so I won't, I would suggest that we move these, but I would also, if you remember back in March, I, I brought up our policies here at the school and wanted to get them up to date or-
Right.
And I think this, with these three new policies-
Yeah.
The administrative reg part of it is, because these are, we're in an elementary school. It's really important for you to know, to put your, the schools, just for if something came up. So there's three, so I don't know if you want to do that on your own, or, but-
Okay, well, we'll take these one at a time, so I need a, I'll make the motion on five thousand four, prevention of harassment, hazing, and bullying, and I need a second on that. Okay, I'll second it. All in favor of that? Aye, unanimous. Number fifty-one, fifty-six, it's student nutrition and wellness, that's also for warning, I'll make the motion, and I need a second, Holly, a second.
Discussion, do we know, I'm on the committee, but I haven't been in the last couple of meetings, did this, would this policy, Rick, have gone through the Food Service Advisory Committee?
Yeah, they, they actually presented it to the Policy Committee last Monday, two Mondays ago.
Okay. There is a meeting tomorrow.
Correct.
Set at five o'clock, or whatever it is?
Three thirty.
Oh, it's three thirty? Oh, okay. Surprised Leon isn't doing a game or something.
No, that's, he's not on the Food Service Committee.
Oh, okay. All right, so all in favor of the policy number fifty-one, fifty-six? Unanimous, okay. Next policy, sixty-one, forty-one, it's computer network and internet acceptable use, and that is also for warning, I'll make the motion. Second, and Jeff Lee seconded. Any discussion on that one?
I just had a question. We don't, I mean, there's, there's locks. We haven't had any pornography in the school, have we? The kids don't, can't get access to that through the, it's, it's very strongly in their watch. I just, it's in here and-
That's a good question.
Is this for warning or for adoption?
Warning.
Warning.
All three policies are for warning.
So I'm just looking at the chart on the back that shows when districts warn and approve, yeah, and it looks like we already warned it.
We may have, or we may have not have-
I think they changed.
They may have changes in that, so.
Is that, would that, explain it, okay.
If they made changes, you'd have to warn it again.
Yeah, went back and they made the change.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, all in favor of this policy? Unanimous, thank you. All right, next up, facilities.
So to continue this parking lot conversation, I'd like to ask the board to take a motion to move the sixteen thousand, five hundred they allocated for the parking lot into the general capital improvement fund, because we paid for the services and the work's done already. So this is a breakdown of the cost that you asked for last month, and at the bottom, it said asking for a motion to move that money from the reserve fund.
I'll make the motion, sir, second?
Second.
Okay, Dave seconded.
This is-
Any discussion?
This was just to pay for the work that's already been done?
Yes.
Well, it's actually already been paid for, we just-
Removing funds.
We need to move the money from the reserve fund into the capital fund, the general fund, which is already paid for, there's a deficit right now in the general fund, because we haven't moved that money yet.
Okay, all in favor? Three, and abstention or no? No, okay.
No.
Okay, Act Forty-Six Study Committee, Jeff, you're up.
Not much to report there, you know, basically, the first meeting, we set the chair and the vice chair of the committee, decided just to keep it within the permanent union, we didn't invite anybody from Arlington or anyplace like that, so nobody else invited in yet. We set a basic schedule, so the next meeting's going to be at Central Office, October nineteenth at six, we're going to try to limit those meetings to one hour, I believe, maybe one and a half hours, and eventually, once we get better understanding of where we're heading, we're going to take the show on the road, which means we'll come to Shasbury and hopefully, you know, the residents of Shasbury can ask questions about Act Forty-Six. We'll do the same in Palano, Bennington, Woodford. That's about it right now.
Okay.
Not much to report there.
Who else is on the committee?
Oh, you know, Jack Dupru, George Sleman, James O'Connor-
Is Ed Lutterton on it though?
Ken Skerrad, and I didn't see Ed there, and then Dick France, and then North Bennington.
Ray Malo.
Matt Patterson.
Oh, Matt Patterson, okay. Yeah, I did shoot off an email after our last meeting to tell Don Hoyt, the chair of the, we would be interested in sitting down, but maybe that's a better way of doing it, if you're going to go on the road, so that's, sounds good, and then everybody will have a chance to discuss that, so. All right, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Okay, principal?
So to jump on board of the solar talk and the energy savings that Rick was talking about, we, we partnered with-
we partnered with Green Mountain Veep, it's Vermont Energy Education Program. They're, they have a Green Mountains, or Green School Energy Challenge Program they do every year, and they invited us. They came in and did a little program with our fourth grade last year, and our fourth grade teacher kind of liked it and talked with the representative. And so they had this program where they work with kids, a group of fourth, fifth, and sixth graders, and they basically do an energy audit of our school. They learn all about the energy systems in our school and how, ways they can save energy and what it means. They're going to work closely with Jay, because Jay kind of knows the systems and everything, and they're going to look at how they can reduce costs, reduce energy use, foster kind of a cultural change about energy at the school, thinking a little differently about it, and improving energy literacy as a community and as a whole. So there'll be a green team created, including some students, that fourth grade teacher, a representative from Veep, probably myself and Jay, and we'll meet on a regular basis with the Veep representative, and she'll walk us through different areas of the school, and we'll look at the heating system, say, okay, what are we doing here? How can we improve it? The windows, I mean, we talked a little bit already about some of the stuff that we've done, and she said, you guys are in definitely the right direction. So it's exciting program. We're hoping to do a board presentation at the end, so the kids can share what they learned and maybe share some thoughts to you about energy efficiencies and some things they can do at the school to help save energy. Any questions on that? Three D printer. So last spring, Chris Grove is our computer lab technician, came to me and said that he saw a three D printer kit online for a substantially lower cost than what you see for a lot of three D printers. For those who don't know, three D printers are print, just like it says, prints a three D object. It's not like your regular printer that prints out words on a page. And so the cost was less than four hundred dollars, which is extremely cheap when you look at, I think the middle school spent a good three thousand on theirs this past year. It's a kit. He had to assemble it. I said, can you assemble it before we buy it? Can you send me? He said, oh, yeah, I can put it together. He was pretty confident he could do that. So we, I jumped on it. I said, yeah, let's get it, let's get some filament, let's introduce this to the kids. So he spent most, much of this fall getting it together, fine tuning it, still working out a little bit. But I wanted to share some of the things that he has printed out so far with the board. Right now, they're just coins and little robots and trinkets, but it's pretty amazing to watch it work. And I think we're the only elementary school in the district that has a three D printer right now.
You are. I checked.
You checked? So, so again, Shasbury's leading the way in technology for very inexpensive costs, really under three hundred dollars. The filament rolls are like thirty dollars a roll, and they last quite a bit. The kids haven't used them themselves, but they've been in the, in the lab when they've, when you started printing something, and their eyes are drawn to it, and their attention's drawn to it like nothing else. It's really engaged them. It can be used in math, science, geography. Teachers can use it to build things. Instead of showing a picture of something, they can build an actual object the kids can hold, a three D object. Kids can hold like a fossil or geographical area. So the kids are very excited. Deb Daly, who's our librarian media specialist, who does a lot of the computer work with the kiddos, she is already looking at, looking at SketchUp, I believe is the program, and how kids can create something on SketchUp, a three D object, and then send it to the printer, and they can, their ideas can actually come to life on the printer. So it's got, it's got a lot of potential, and we're going to be exploring ways this year and next, and how we can use it and how the kids can experience this. So they're very excited about it. Once word got out that it was together and running, everybody wanted to see it go. So it's still a little rough. Some of the coins, you'll see their letters are backwards, but Chris is going to work on it. He'll figure that part out. But it's a, it's a pretty neat project, and we're pretty excited to have it here at Shasbury.
You know, when I seen that, I said, oh, wow. I says, because I know we spent over fifty grand for one at the CDC.
Yeah.
That's a real, that's a real one, Frank.
I know, but I called up, I says, wait a minute.
This is a very, that's something I come to you, Frank.
Okay, I said, my God, I said, I know, and just some materials for that one. But now I guess, I talked to Mike Lawler today, and the stuff has gotten a lot cheaper.
They have.
And the machines are a lot cheaper, so.
Yeah.
But that makes you feel good.
And this was, because we have, we have Chris, and Chris has been a great addition to the school. Him being able to assemble it helped with the cost. Instead of buying one that's assembled, he was able to spend a little bit of time and get it together, and he's able to fine tune it. So it's, we're excited and hope to share more three D things with you in the future. Finally, we had our annual, how many years in a row was this, Tim? Four?
I think so, yeah.
I think it's four. Our fourth annual Fall Walk to School Day last Wednesday. Beautiful morning. It was gorgeous. We met at the T and M. All the buses dropped off again down at T and M, and we had a number of parents also drop off. I got to say, it was over a hundred kids. I'm pretty sure Holly was there for the start. I think there was close to a hundred kids there when you say Holly. Yeah, there was quite a few. A lot of parents joined us. A couple of teachers came down to walk with us. It's become a tradition. It's become, it's old hat now. The kids know what to do and how to do it, and it was a lot of fun. And we'll do it again, not in the winter, but in the spring.
They haven't brought that up again, though.
We had trouble last winter and we tried to do it.
Larry and I froze down there at T and M. Where is everybody?
It was a beautiful day. It just happened to be minus fourteen.
And with the winter, they're predicting again, we'll probably hold off until spring to do it again in the spring. So, thank you.
I'm set?
Yep.
Okay. I've already told you the meeting for the budget meeting is the twenty-ninth. That's a Thursday. Let's see. We're going to set the next meeting would be November. I don't have a calendar.
The next one's Veterans Day, technically.
So we're going to move it a day, though. We're not going to meet on Veterans Day.
We meet the next day? Is that your?
Yeah, yeah, I don't, we're not going to meet on Veterans Day.
November twelfth?
Yes, thank you.
Thursday, the twelfth.
And that'll be at six thirty, so. Other than that, that's all I have. Does anybody have anything else?
Just one thing. I was thinking what Mr. Oberhauer said.
Yep.
Could we look at what we've raised in fundraisers the last couple of years, just to ballpark and see if we could fit it into the budget? I mean, you know, because you must have some number. You know, and then we see.
PTO and all that, they've raised a lot of that money, don't they?
Yeah, PTO raises the majority of it. PTO and after-school program, further programs.
It would be nicer to see how much we're, you know, expecting from fundraisers versus not providing as a board.
Sure.
If it comes down to the safety thing, I think we have to look for that, that safety's important, so.
Well, don't forget, everybody wants nature's classroom in there, too.
But like I said, I think we should at least put it on there.
Oh, I think it's a good idea to see what it is, to see how much the off-site monies that are raised to do things in the school, and we should know what all those programs are and all that stuff. So that's a good idea. But we are going to be starting budget here.
Yeah, I think, you know, if you put it as an earmark somewhere.
Yep, no, that's fine.
Help them out and all.
If I could make a comment, to commend Jeff, we're at least looking at that question. The parents here at Shasbury are just absolutely weary with fundraisers because there's always fundraisers going on.
It takes a lot of time.
One of the things that I just learned, for example, that I didn't know is that apparently the kids go, the sixth graders go to Montpelier for an educational trip every year to observe the legislature. We have to, the parents have to raise money to buy the bus to get them to Montpelier.
Usually, isn't that given by the legislator, I think?
It was talked about at the fundraising.
Years, years ago, Tim Corcoran used to do it for all the school districts. He raised all the money. He purchased all the transport. He did it all. Didn't cost anybody anything. Obviously, he's passed away, and that no longer happens, so, you know, most of the schools have picked it up on themselves to continue that trip because it is, it's been a good trip for the kids.
Yeah, yeah.
But it seems like the kind of thing the school should pay for. It's like going to a museum. It's not like fun time in New York City. This is an educational trip. And I was, I was surprised to hear that, that it's something that the parents are expected to raise money for.
So I had a sixth grader last year. I remember the trip. I'm surprised to hear it, too. I know that there was a lot of fundraising to finance trips to other places, or another place, anyway, for what was more of a fun outing than educational, but was, would, last year, would the, would the budget have funded any of that transportation to Montpelier?
Only if the teachers allocate a certain amount of money for their transportation and field trips. So if those sixth grade teachers allocated that money for that trip, then the budget would have, would have paid for it. But I think they decided just to raise the money, can use the budget money for other transportation.
Okay.
It's kind of a, they raised it for that or they raised it for something else.
Right.
I know, ten years ago, I think Zach was a sixth grader, and it was happening back then. We fundraised for the.
Well, if I could suggest another reason to at least consider it is the other people that are wary with the fundraising, fundraising is our local businesses. Every time there, the, anybody wants, at the school wants to raise money for something, they go to the local businesses. My wife was asking somebody the other day, and I forgot who it was, and the guy said, one of our local businesses. He says, I'll do what I can, but I get asked three times a day to contribute to the schools or some local fundraiser. And, you know, these are just people hammering out a living through the local businesses. It's not like they, they're philanthropists.
Yeah, I think, I think when you speak to fundraising, it's not all the school. It's other, a lot of other organizations are also doing the fundraising and the.
But, you know, especially things like an educational trip to Montpelier, I, in my mind, that, that belongs in the budget. That doesn't, that's not something you make parents raise money to do.
You know, I'm just going to, I agree completely, but I have observed, and maybe other people have too, or have seen it differently, but there are parents, the PTO, nobody certainly here at this table is pressuring them to raise money. They seem to come together and want to do that, and I guess I would just want to be certain that, you know, nobody felt like their efforts weren't appreciated. If we said, you know, we don't need to do that anymore. But I, I agree with what you've just said more or less, Tim. I think we overdo it.
David, one response I would have to that is that the fundraising materials are distributed by the school. So at least, you know, if you want to allow these organizations to have that kind of latitude, I think we really need to look at what kind of policy do we have regarding fundraising. I know when I was at the CDC, there were guidelines that we had to go through, and things had to be approved by Superintendent Director, and we looked at, you know, what's the burden on the community going to be and all these, all these types of things. Considering that Superintendent Director's been superintendent of our ESU, I doubt he was having a problem with school districts looking at things like that. But when you have after-school, and you've got sixth grade, and you've got PTO, meaning you have individual other fundraising things going on, there's a lot of different angles where things aren't getting coordinated, and I think it really needs to be tied together in a lot of ways. Particularly when we have fundraising going on where we're raising money to raise money and we don't even have a purpose, that's, I think, a very problem I have.
Okay, anybody else? Anything else? Okay, and tomorrow night is the VSBA training here at six thirty for board members. So that will be happening. That'll be at six thirty until nine o'clock. Yes.
So the meeting on the twenty-ninth?
Yes.
Am I bringing anything, or are we just talking, or?
Well, we, the board wants to go over the budget. If you have anything that you can.
This year's budget or next year's budget?
Next year's. But this budget's already set, so.
Okay.
We want next year's budget. Now, I don't know if you had, you probably won't have the necessary figures that we're going to need because people are going to ask for assessments and what that's going to be and.
We have to make sure to put the solar on there, too.
Yeah, well, they, yeah, we're going to do that.
So are we hoping to hear from Jeff on what he hopes?
What he's going to, thinks he needs, and I don't know if, is that going to be, you're going to be ready to, if you need for fiscal year sixteen, seventeen?
Get most of it together, brother.
Okay, all right.
And Wendy? I thought a couple of months ago, we said that by last month, you would have those things.
We're working on them now.
Is that going to give you enough time, though, the twenty-ninth?
We'll bring what we can.
Oh, all right, okay.
I can guarantee you won't have everything.
Oh, well, I'm sure, but then if anybody's got any questions, then maybe that's the time to bring them up and whatever they want to know, so. All right. Anything else? Anybody got anything else? I move to adjourn. I need a second. Jeff seconded it. All in favor? Aye. Thank you.